Good evening, welcome to the Hudson Board of Education meeting Tuesday, April 13th, 2010. I'll call this meeting to order. Entertain a motion for approval of the agenda that board members have before them.
So moved.
We have a motion by Barb.
Second.
Second by Tom. If not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions approved. If you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Okay. The next item on the agenda is a student staff recognition, and we have Sandy recognizing the winter sports.
Thank you. And I'm going to turn it right over. Stephanie DeVos, our athletic director, is here this evening with several of our student ambassadors, so I'll let Stephanie come forward and introduce who will be speaking on behalf of each of our winter sports.
Thank you for having us this evening. It's always an honor to introduce these fine young athletes and their coaches for all the hard work and the commitment that they show. Before we begin tonight, there are a couple of distinct awards that are a little bit separate from the rest of the winter sports season wrap-ups. And at this time, I would like to introduce to you Kelly Hackbarth, our girls head swim coach, and she's going to tell you a little bit about this next award we're going to present here.
Like she said, I'm Kelly. I also teach at the middle school. I recently nominated Mellie Meyer for the KAR11 Academic All-Star Award, and she received that award. They came to interview her today, and the reason why I nominated her was because for the past two years, I was able to get to know her as her coach. She was the captain of our team last year, and she's just an exemplary athlete as well as student and community member. The things that she does within our community is unbelievable. She does a lot of volunteer work. She leads exceptionally. She is a very academically driven girl as well. So to have her on my team was an amazing experience for me as well as her teammates, and I just thought that she should be recognized for what she's done, so I wanted to let them know the things that she's done. And they luckily came to interview her and recognize her for that as well. Mellie honestly exemplifies what we hope an athlete and a student would come out of the Hudson School District as, so we're lucky to have her. She also has received the WIAA Academic Award for a high GPA. So she's a very wonderful person that I have been lucky enough to have in my life, so I wanted to recognize her.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mellie. Can I ask a question?
Congratulations.
I'm sorry, Stephanie.
Go ahead.
Just a quick question. Is this going to be on television?
Yes, the first week in May.
First week in May.
I don't know the exact date, but sometime in the first week in May.
Okay.
That's what Tim McNiff said.
Super. Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Great job, Kelly and Mellie. Okay, our next student athlete that I'd like to introduce, and we're going to talk a little bit to him later, but we do have the honor of our Seoul State Wrestling Champion, Kyle Crane as well. Getting to the winter sports wrap-ups, and we have a few coaches here tonight as well that are going to talk about their teams, and I'm going to introduce them so they can discuss their seasons. The first winter sport would be Coach Rick Schultz and the CI floor hockey team. Rick, where are you? Would you like to...
Kevin.
Okay, Kevin. Kevin is going to...
This is Kevin Ricky. Kevin was our goalie, has been our goalie for the past two seasons at our sport.
So they can hear you on.
This is our goalie, Kevin Ricky, and Kevin has been our goalie on our sport for the last two seasons, has done an incredible job. So Kevin is a sophomore, freshman, sorry. They can play, in our sport, they can play from 7th grade on up, so sometimes I lose sight of where they are in their education, so anyway.
Go ahead.
I'm Kevin, and I was with the floor hockey team, as Rick said, and like for me, I had a great experience, had a great time, and got to help with coaching and helping with the other players. So it's been a great experience. Like Rick said, you can go from 7th grade up and just have a lot of fun.
That's great. Thanks, Kevin.
We next have boys basketball.
Hey, I'm Eric Schmichael, senior. Our coach was Coach Jason Swaley. This year was, it was a really fun year, although our record wasn't necessarily what we set out for it to be. I felt like we were very competitive this whole year we had. I felt like we started off, we had a very young team, full of like new, everyone was basically new to the varsity program. We started off a little slow, but we just thought, we just want to keep getting better every day, and we hit a really good stretch where we were winning like, I think, five out of six games, and then it just went just like a little rocky, but we were in most of our games. It was just a couple possessions here, a couple possessions there, maybe a handful of those games would have gone our way, but we played like a really tough strength of schedule. We had, we played five teams over the season that were in the top 15, whether that be in Minnesota or Wisconsin, but really had a great time with all my friends, and it's a memorable experience.
Super. Thanks, Eric. Congratulations, boys basketball.
Representing girls, cheerleading, our head coach, Suzie Robley.
Hi, I'm Suzie Robley, like Steph said, although cheerleading now is co-ed. So I have three boys. Next year, I'll have four or five. So this year, we did a great job being co-ed for the first time. We got first at the Eagle X Travaganza and first at the Sweetheart Classic. We got third at Regionals, which is now in Wisconsin Rapids, and we got fourth at State, which is the highest we've ever placed, so we're pretty excited about that. Thanks.
Great. Thanks, Suzie.
Did we have representatives from gymnastics here? I just don't want to miss. Okay, great. Our head coaches were Holly Stewart, Molly Dato, and Brienne Frawley, and we have gymnastics representatives.
Hi, I'm Sarah Monette.
And I'm Devon Ducharme.
And this year, it wasn't like our greatest gymnastics season, but we did pretty good. We had a lot of like new people on the team, and we got third at conference and third at sectionals.
We ended up having three individuals placed on floor, and they ended up going to State for us. It was Paige Kazak, Toria Farrell, and Amanda Baker, and they all did decent at State. It was just a good experience for them, and hopefully we'll be able to go all around next year, because since there were so many new kids, they kind of have a feeling now, so we feel confident for next year. Yeah.
That's great. Thanks for the report. Congratulations, gymnastics.
Our next representatives are from girls hockey.
Hi, I'm Abby Singer-Haus.
I'm Elise Riedel.
And our coach is Dan Dietrich, and this year was a very successful season for us. We went 15-2 and 4. It was a lot of fun, and...
We were the, we lost in the sectional final to go to State, but we lost to St. Croix Valley, who, we beat them earlier in the year, and we were the only team to beat them in Wisconsin in the last two years, so it was kind of a big deal.
That's great.
And at the sectional final, there was like 1,000 people there, and then sing.
Yeah, so it was just a really great season.
All right. Thank you. Congratulations, girls hockey.
We next have boys hockey. Mike Stasov, coach, and Chris Dove is the assistant. Boys hockey.
I'm Zach Beinlick.
I'm Evan Zick. And we started off kind of slow, like 8-14 at the end of the season, so not the best season. Like she said, our coach was Coach Stasov, and picked up in the middle, kind of, not the best season.
Yeah, we started off 0-7, and then we went to a Minnesota tournament, which usually we don't do too well against Minnesota teams, and we took third place, so that was a pretty good accomplishment for us, and it was just a fun season to be with the guys, and yeah, it was fun.
Congratulations. Thanks, Evan. Thanks, Zach. And the boys hockey.
Next, we have swimming and diving for the boys, and I'm honored to have Steve Webb here, our first-year head coach, which had a very successful season. Steve, would you like to...
Hi, my name is Steve Webb, and this was my first-year as swim coach of the Hudson team, and really, we had a great season. I'd like to bring up Zach Dahl and Winter Jorgensen, two of our captains next year, and I just had a blast this year coaching these guys. It's a great group of individuals, and next year should be even better, so let these guys...
Hi, my name's Zach, and I started swimming as a sophomore, and it's been difficult having like, we've had different coaches at the beginning of every year, so having Steve step in and with the success we had, it's been really good, and we're hoping he can stay with us.
Yeah, I'm Winter. Some of the things this year, we've, this is probably, I've been swimming since a freshman, and this year's probably been our best year since I've been on the team with Coach Steve, and we've had, we won the Superior Invite, we took third at conference and third at sectionals, and we sent four people to State along with two relays. So it was a good year, and we really liked the coach, the good guy.
That's great. All right. Thanks, Steve, and the boys swim and dive. Congratulations.
Jay Skinner is the outspoken one of the bunch. Jay, would you like to just say hi? Last but not least, we have wrestling, and at this time, I'd like to introduce to you state champion Kyle Crane.
I'm obviously Kyle.
And I'm Phil Bates. And for our whole year, we went four straight years for 6-0 for the conference, four straight conference championships for both our senior years, and of course, Kyle was a state champ, and we also had three other people go to State. And we took second at the By State Tournament down in La Crosse out of 56 teams, and just had a really good season, a lot of honorable mention, ranked kids, did pretty well.
That's impressive. I do have a question for Kyle. As long as I've known you, you've wrestled. Now, when did you first start wrestling?
I was four years old.
Four years old.
Before kindergarten, so 14 years.
Lawn career. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, and we also went 12-1 in duels, only losing to Wasaw West in the sectional finals in a closed duel.
Very impressive. Thanks. Congratulations, boys wrestling.
Thank you all for coming, and thank you for having us. We have had a solid winter, and we look to an exciting spring, so I'm off to a soccer game.
All right. Thanks, Stephanie. Congratulations, student athletes. Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, Superintendent's Report. Mary.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item that I'm going to report on is the April 6th school board election. We had four candidates for two seats. Mark Kaiserzot had 960 votes, followed by Pat German with 929, and then Cindy Crimmens with 926, and Jim Bartline with 920 votes. Certainly, it was a very close election, and I should say there were 33 write-in votes as well. Close election, and Cindy Crimmens has requested a recount, and so that will be conducted starting tomorrow. It will take a few days to complete, and we'll move forward from there and report the results on our website.
I just, I wanted to say, you know, first of all, just that it was a really spectacular campaign in that every candidate was just so collegial, and I think that's really important because I think it shows that we can do what our country was set up to do, and that is to change leadership in a peaceful and organized way, and we should be really grateful for that. And I just have to say that I am requesting a recount only because everybody that I've talked to keeps asking if there's going to be one, and I think that that is a question that really just should be put to rest. I don't think that's something that should linger over this board as it moves forward, and so I'm really looking forward to getting that out of the way, and whatever the outcome of that is, I just hope that everybody will celebrate our democratic process, because it just really excites me in close elections like this, that if we walk away with nothing else from that, we should really just walk away with a really compelling feeling that every single vote counts, and that it makes a difference, you know? So if you care what happens in your community and your state and your country, you know, you really do have to get out there and vote. So that's what I'd kind of like to leave you with thinking about the election. Thanks.
All right. I will move on then to the high school principal recommendation for starting next year. This has been a very extensive process for us. We started with a survey of staff and characteristics that they were interested in. We moved on to a survey of our community and student characteristics that they wanted in a high school principal, and then we went into posting the position and moving forward. We had 53 applicants for the position. We reduced that first to 12, then to 6, then to 4, 2, and now 1. The last two finalists really went through an extensive process. They had 12 different interviews and a site visit to their schools, where we interviewed people about them. So it was a very extensive process, and I'm very, very pleased to announce and to recommend to the Board of Education that Laura Love, who is currently principal, high school principal at Lodi, Wisconsin, be the next principal at Hudson High School starting next year following Ed Lucas's retirement at the end of the school year. We involved almost 75 staff members, students, community members in this selection process, and so many people have already met Laura and are starting to talk about her, and I'm going to share some of those comments in just a minute. Laura has been in Lodi for eight years, and prior to that, she was in Verona as an associate principal there. Lodi has about 540 students, and Verona is a much larger high school like our own. Prior to that, she taught high school science, coordinated at-risk programming, worked with gifted science students, and served as an assistant cross-country coach. She is a recognized educational leader in our state. She's active in the Association of Wisconsin School Administrators. She is on their Board of Directors and serves on the High School Commission. She's also president of the National Fellowship for the Improvement of Educational Leadership, and she is a frequent conference presenter in the state. When we went on the site visit, we heard from numerous people, and again, we talked to students, we talked to teachers, support staff, parents, and a coach, and they praised her for her visibility in classrooms and halls, in the lunchroom, at co-curricular and athletic events, and in the community as well. One student spoke about her, he happened to turn around, he said, "She's right there", and it was, they were very used to that. She was all over their school and very active. She went out of her way for students. That was another thing they described. She was personable, or she is personable, approachable, friendly, hands-on, fair, and one student said she minimizes the drama. She's collaborator, she's a listener, and when she makes decisions, she listens first before making a decision, and it was interesting that numerous people described her as making smart decisions. Highly intelligent, certainly she is an educational and instructional leader, and she has stretched teachers and support staff in her school, and has worked on professional development in best practices. Our staff, as I said, identified traits, and the community identified, and students identified traits as well. And when I reviewed those traits and looked for evidence in our interview process and in the site visit, there was only really one significant trait that appeared on both lists that we don't have evidence of yet, and that is successful experience in leading a large staff and student population. And so very common, a principal of a high school the size of Lodi would move to a high school the size of Hudson, and she hasn't done that yet, but again, she had that experience as an associate principal. She researched the Hudson School District like no other candidate we saw. She actually came to the district and actually went downtown, and she interviewed people who were in our businesses, and asked them about the community, asked them about the school district, and was very impressed with comments that people made in our community about living here, working here, and about the school district and the high school. She, her own vision and passion aligns very closely with our strategic plan and vision, HSD 2025. And when we entered her school, immediately, we saw evidence of emphasis and focus on global literacy and environmental sustainability. That should be, sound very familiar to us, since that's part of our graduate learner outcomes and the focus of our district goals this year. She met, as I said, a number of our community members, and I'd like to read you a couple quotes when they reflected on their impressions of Laura. And these people were involved in our feedback teams that we've talked about, a day when we had people, a team of students, a team of teachers, a team of support staff, community business leaders, and one of our high school parents and the city of Hudson mayor, Dean Knutson, said this about Laura. "Laura Love really stood out during an interview process filled with several good candidates. Very sharp, poised, passionate, professional. Laura's ability to communicate her ideas quickly and clearly will be valuable. I am confident that her experience and background prepare her to be immediately effective as our new principal. We are fortunate to be able to recruit a talented, caring, and experienced professional like Laura to join Hudson High School." And another parent, high school parent, Jamie Johnson, had this to say. "From parents' perspective, I think we are getting an outstanding principal that will serve our children and our district well. Principal Love's qualifications, demeanor, and record of success make her an excellent secondary education leader." So I think those are good praise from people in our community about Laura and what they learned about her during this process. She will be moving to the area in the summer with her husband. She has, they have two children, and one is in college in Madison, UW-Madison, and another one is a senior at Lodi High School and planning on college this fall. So it will be, I introduced the staff to Laura Love similarly to what I am doing to you this evening, just this afternoon. Unfortunately, she can't be with us. She is in Lodi, but she will join us sometime before the end of the year, and will have probably a reception so that she can meet staff as well.
Okay.
So I recommend her, and you will act on her during the consent items under the personnel agenda items.
Okay. Thanks, Mary. Any questions for Mary? Certainly sounds like a very impressive candidate, and we look forward to Principal Love joining the Hudson School District. Thank you.
My last part of my report is about the update on negotiations with the teachers union, and Nancy's going to talk about that.
Very, very briefly, but we're happy to announce that the district and the teachers union have reached a tentative agreement. That tentative agreement is subject to ratification by both parties probably later next month, and after the ratification, then we will be preparing jointly a statement to the community and to the press.
Okay. Thanks, Nancy, and I want to thank you and the team that was involved in the negotiation process, as well as on the staff side, all those involved in coming together and reaching an agreement, so that's certainly welcome news, and we appreciate those hard efforts. We're going to move on to reports. HSD 2025 Global Literacy. Sandy?
The district is working very hard to move forward at the strategic plan, HSD 2025, and two of the areas that we're focused on this year are global literacy and environmental sustainability. And one of the strands involved with global literacy is teacher and student exchanges and increasing cultural awareness. One of the leaders in our school district would be the music department. This is the second trip now, international trip, that we have, that Andy and Carrie have organized to send choir members abroad and have an exciting experience. So with us this evening are Andy Hayes and Carrie Heisler with some of the students, and they'll share some of the wonderful experiences of Europe.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. Good evening to everyone. We had the distinct honor and privilege in March for 10 days, traveling to four different countries. It was kind of a whirlwind, but we traveled to Vienna, to Austria, Poland, the Czech Republic, and Slovakia. We had five formal performances in some of the most amazing performance venues possible in that part of the country, and I think that's the important thing about this trip, is it's performance-based. Many times, you go to other high schools and they take a trip, they maybe sing or perform once, and then they do all the other fun stuff. Well, we did the fun stuff, but the emphasis was on the performance. We performed at, first at St. Nicholas in Prague in the Czech Republic, moving on to St. Mary's in Poland, which is the largest church in Poland. Mike Sobieski, a friend of mine who plays St. Paul Chamber Orchestra, is from Poland. We had lunch about a month ago, he said, "How did you get that church?" I said, "I don't know, but we're singing there." And then, of course, ending our tour in the infamous St. Stephen's Cathedral in Vienna. We had some incredible educational and a lot of musical moments, I think, on this trip that these students will take with them the rest of their lives. The students behaved extremely well. They were wonderful ambassadors for our community, for this school, and quite frankly, for our country. It was an exciting trip. You don't want to hear me talk anymore about it. We'll have Carrie say a few words, and then we'll have the students introduce themselves, and they can talk a little bit about their musical experiences.
Thanks, Andy.
I just want to say, it was just an absolute joy and honor to be able to be with these students and the parents that went with us, and also Ed Lucas and his wife, who showered around. We just had a wonderful trip. We had the most educational guides who were so helpful at all times. The countries we visited were beautiful, and they were, every place was so nice and welcoming to us, and it was really nice to be able to get that experience, that cultural experience there, and to, like Andy said, be great ambassadors for our school and for the United States. Our guides specifically said they didn't necessarily have the most favorable impressions of Americans that they had met before, and I think we were able to make a very positive lasting impression. lasting impression on them, and they all said how they just couldn't say enough about our students and how wonderful they were, and how intelligent, and how they asked such wonderful questions. And I think they really learned a lot, as well as, like Andy said, performing in those venues was just a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity.
Thank you.
One more thing about the performance, you also need to know they were very well-attended. Usually, a minimum of 200 to 300 people per performance, which was exceeded my expectations. And then, of course, in a wonderful Lutheran church in Ostron, Poland, we packed the church with 515 people. And the pastor at the end gave a little speech thanking everyone for coming, and he said he can't remember when the church had that many people in it at one time. And they came to enjoy the choirs providing the standing ovation, and we, of course, gave them an encore. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce some students. We have Taylor Nelson, Sarah Minett, and Jared Coffin.
Hi. Like Mr. Hayes said, my name is Taylor Nelson, and my favorite part about the trip was, this may sound a little cheesy, but bear with me, because it's true, was seeing the delight in the audience's faces when we sang, because it just shows how music can go past that language barrier, and it's like nothing else, and that we are in a totally different continent, but that we could still connect with these people. And like this little boy at a British school was like, "Can you sing it again?" And that just meant so much to us students, and it was just a life-changing experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Sarah, and mine is kind of like Taylor's. My favorite part was, at the end of every performance, it's a tradition for the choirs to sing "The Lord Bless You," and even though, like, the people that we were singing to didn't understand the words, like, you could look out and see tears in their eyes, and like, you could see that the music really touched them, and that was, like, really special to me, and that was my favorite part.
Cool. Thanks.
And I'm Jared Coffin, and my favorite part was just being in a place that was built in the, like, 14th, 15th, 16th century, and there are enormous buildings, and there have been composers, and, like, people, like, hiding that he was in this cathedral, and I was standing in the spot that he played many of his works, and I was singing right there, and it was, it was a great experience doing that.
That's great. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Hayes, Ms. Heisler. What a wonderful experience. Thanks for the report. Okay, we'll move on to short-term space for learning at Hudson Middle School. Mary?
I'd invite Principal Dan Koch and Principal Susie Prather to come up and join us. Nancy Sweet and Tim Erickson will be providing information for this report as well. You would remember that our original plan was to come to the board with this plan, our options, in March, but we delayed that because we weren't ready at that time. So it has been delayed a month, and thank you for being patient with us, as we had more work to do. The middle school and the high school, both are in need of a long-term space for learning solution. And the board is very aware of that. We have studied that for over a year, and the board was looking forward to moving forward to pursue a long-term plan to address the space needs in grade six through 12. But the recession occurred, and in consideration of the financial challenges that our community members were facing, the board temporarily postponed work on a long-term solution, knowing that the long-term solution was needed. It still is needed, and it will be something that we need to continue to redirect our efforts to, probably as soon after we get finished with this short-term plan. So this is an interim, short-term plan for up to four years for the middle school, in anticipation of a long-term solution that we will be working on in the next year, I anticipate. So if we look at the report that is in front of you on enrollment projections, our building capacity at the middle school is 1,125 students. And this fall, in September, on the official September date, we had 1,211 students, and that's 86 students over capacity. Generally, we, and it's recommended, that we run schools below their full capacity for flexibility, for those fluctuations that we have from year to year in enrollment in grade level. And we all know that occurs, Nancy Sweet has brought numbers each year, and we can see that those numbers change from one grade level to the next grade level. And so generally, we run schools a little under capacity for that flexibility. This is not the case with the middle school. They are over capacity, and I multiple times applauded the work of Dan, his administrative team, and his staff for making full use and beyond of their facility. If we look at Dr. Reinhardt, Hazel Reinhardt's projections, she is a very experienced and recognized demographer, and we look out four years from now, the time that we're talking about, for the short-term solution, we would, she projects that we would have almost 300 additional students above that capacity. And that's about 200 students more than we have right now. That's quite significant for a school that is beyond full. Dr. Reinhardt's projections, just for this year, are right on the mark. And her projections are just 10 students above the actual enrollment at Hudson Middle School. So we use these projections as we plan for this short-term plan. This year, we have 13 teachers who do not have classrooms. We often refer to those as teachers on carts. And we know that some of their teaching and learning materials can be moved around from classroom to classroom that happen to be empty at a given period, but there are other learning materials that cannot be moved as easily. And as a result, the curriculum does, is modified as a result of that. So we have 13 at the present time, and we anticipate that there easily could be more, starting with next year. So without additional space for learning and expecting that those enrollments increases will continue to occur, we're very concerned about erosion, which we've already had some of the middle school philosophy and house concept that are valued by our community, and certainly our parents and students. So without any, addressing this need in any way, we will find that there will be that erosion. We'll also find a modification in the current middle school program. You've seen some modifications already that we have needed to make because of increased number of students. And these will be in the form of limitations and reductions of that program. And certainly, without additional space, class sizes will continue to escalate. So with that being said, we started meeting with the middle school administrators to talk about various options for consideration for a short-term plan, and I really want to emphasize, this is a short-term plan, and the options were looked at in that regard. So Tim, you're going to talk about those options?
Sure. We considered a number of different options, and you can see the list there. And I'll just run through them quickly, but one was using the current middle school space only, as it is now, it's really not addressing the problem. Looking at ways of using additional staff, using additions to the current middle school, use of space in Hudson Prairie with or without boundary changes, use of portable classrooms, use of leased or purchased community space for all or part of a grade level. And we looked at a couple of different options there. One, as we kicked around certain ideas with Camp St. Croix possibilities, and also looking at the City of Hudson Municipal Building. We looked at multi-track scheduling, split-day schedule, and modified middle school program. When, as we went through each of those options, we had a list of criteria that we applied to those options to, to see how they would affect certain areas. And the criteria that we had was, number one, looking at the middle school philosophy and the house concept, and the effect that each of those options would have on that. And another criteria was the current middle school curriculum and the co-curricular programs, and how those would be maintained or not maintained. Class, looking at class-size guidelines, and again, that's 22 to 27 for the middle school. And also measuring a level of disruption from, you know, something that would be least disruptive to very disruptive. And then also a cost-benefit of the options for a short-term solution.
As Tim went over those options that we considered, it occurred to me, we have some things listed, like Camp St. Croix, and that might be a real surprise to them, that we were even considering using their space. We considered it from the middle school, and what, how, and what we could move there without, and, without contacting them, because we eliminated that option before we moved forward with it. So that might be surprising to them. We did, Tim and Jim Staschall did go through the City of Hudson Municipal Building, so I believe the city is aware of that. Going on to the options for your consideration, we're going to start with option one, and this has an addition to the cafeteria that we'll talk about in just a minute. And I want to again emphasize that what we were looking at was a short-term plan for up to four years. And so, the first part of that, option A, is using three classrooms in Hudson Prairie for middle school classes. One of the things we talked about in our meetings was, as Tim talked about, portable classrooms. Portable classrooms could provide some additional space, but we have had the opportunity to use Hudson Prairie, which has the most flexibility and additional rooms of any of our schools in the past, prior to Rivercrest opening. And so, we knew that there were some classrooms that may be used for these purposes, and really reserved, three classrooms reserved for the middle school use for this period of time. And to do that, we wanted to help protect Hudson Prairie, and so we looked at maintaining Hudson Prairie as a four-section school, capping classes that exceeded the maximum class-size guidelines. And you'll remember that we have done this before, prior to Rivercrest opening, and so we have experience doing that. And then, there is enough space in Hudson Prairie to have four sections per grade level and to address the other needs in the building. And then, after a grade level reached the, our maximum class-size guideline, and it was capped, any incoming new students would be assigned to another elementary school where there was a seat in the appropriate grade level. And then, transportation would be provided. Again, this is just like the plan we used in all the elementary schools prior to the opening of Rivercrest. The students who were assigned to a different school could continue through grade five in that school, but unless the long-term plan added a change in elementary boundaries. And so, without actually knowing what that plan is, it's difficult for us to know if that would occur, but that would be the exception. The second part of that is adding staff to maintain class-size guidelines where possible. And those guidelines for grade six through eight are 22 students to 27 students. Staffing needs would be, need to be assessed annually, and recommendations for additional staff need to be made to the Board of Education. And I'm certainly referring to the middle school in this, which shifted from A1, which was Hudson Prairie, to now A2, which is the middle school. So this would help keep our class-size guidelines in front of us as we look at staffing. And if you remember, we have an addition, we've asked for some additions that you've taken action on for next year already for middle school that addressed these class-size guidelines. A3, construct an addition to the current middle school cafeteria to provide flexible space, and really classrooms for physical education, orchestra, band, and then more room for the cafeteria, which is very full during lunch periods. This also allows us needed girls' locker room space, because we would be moving the weight room, which is a physical education area, to the addition, and then that would provide room for remodeling that space into girls' locker room space. This kind of space, as we call it flexible, will also, is the kind of high-demand space that we have in our schools that is used by community groups and our booster clubs and so forth. So it, we anticipate that it will be used in the summers, and in the evenings, and on the weekends as well. And it will address a number of the significant areas that the middle school has, and in meeting our class-size guidelines. And then lastly, in this option, we need to monitor and make adjustments to this plan as necessary each year. So we'll be looking at it in relationship to both middle school and elementary enrollments, and the learning needs at both, as we move forward with the plan. So yes, there could be adjustments during that four-year period, and we'll be watching that and planning for those, if that occurs. Option B is without the addition to the cafeteria. It's, it is the same plan without that addition. We see this as really an incomplete plan, addressing, and does not address the majority of the learning needs that we are addressing in Plan A. But we wanted you to see what the difference would be, and also to have a comparison about if we didn't construct the addition, what would happen to the middle school program, and what would happen, and Dan's going to address that in just a minute. So I won't go through each of these points. Again, they are the same as option A without the addition to the cafeteria. I want to just again emphasize that this is done in comparison, and it is, as we see it, incomplete in addressing the needs at the middle school. So Dan, will you talk about with, what would happen if we did not add the addition, and enrollments continued to increase as they are projected?
Is it on now? Okay. First of all, I'd like to go back maybe to the very, that very first page, and at the bottom of that page, the paragraph down there, it says, "Hudson Middle School has the highest enrollment of any middle school in the state of Wisconsin." Okay? I'm not sure people fully comprehend that.
Is that, Dan, in a single building?
Yeah.
Because some, some districts have more than one.
Well, if they have multiple, multiple middle schools, yes. But as a, as a single entity, we have the largest middle school in the state. And, you know, to, as a parallel to that, I don't know if you're familiar with horse racing at all, but to make the race equitable, you sometimes add weight to the horse, so that it seems to be, be fair. But you know, if you put a significant amount of weight on the horse, eventually, it's simply going to slow down. Okay? And that's what we feel like right now, with the issue that we have here with space for learning, that this is, in effect, significant weight, and it's starting to have its impact, and could possibly, the impact could be slowing down, and we simply don't want to do that. We have very large numbers, very large numbers. And I'm, I'm fully cognizant of all the issues that surround, you know, this particular one, and emphasizing again Mary's comment, because she said it about four or five times, and I'm going to say it again, in terms of a short-term solution. But short-term has various meanings, and we've identified that as looking at somewhere around, you know, a four-year, a four-year timeline here. Thinking about that as a four-year timeline, I just want you to understand that if nothing is fundamentally done, you can look at the chart and see the numbers we're going to have in this building over that four-year time span. And I'm here largely And I'm here largely to tell you, we need some help. And I know it's a difficult process, a difficult decision-making process, but we need some help. We need some assistance in trying to deal with the issues that we're confronting right now. You know, I've been before this board on a variety of occasions and have told you, and you know, and you have told me, which I appreciate greatly, how much you value the philosophy and the concept, and that's something we don't want to lose. I came to you before telling you that I thought it was in jeopardy. I'm sitting here tonight telling you, I think it's even more so from the sheer weight of our size and the problems that presents to us. I don't know, I don't have a crystal ball with regard to the long-term solution, but I know we have some options. We've been going through this process for a while, you know, trying to figure out what we can do, what seems to be prudent and reasonable in order to meet, meet our needs. And what we have come up with at this point, we think is the best of the short-term solutions that we have. And the sort of brick and mortar construction that we're talking about, Mary mentioned as well, and I want to echo that again, this is the type of space that will never go unused in a building such as ours, regardless of how it eventually is maybe reapportioned, you know, as a school. It will never go unused. There will always be groups, there will be opportunities for, for people in the school as well as in the community to take advantage of that space, which is why we focused on this type of, this type of space, you know, as opposed to classrooms. The classrooms by definition could be considered overbuilt to a certain extent, maybe just pure general classrooms. These are classrooms. These are spaces where learning does indeed take place, but it's the type of space that is sort of multifunctional and helps, help us meet, you know, our goals with regard to our students and with our staff in the building. Without, you know, some serious consideration for this, this plan, we're going to be looking at some issues that, number one, we've never confronted before, one of which you noticed in the first, the first bullet on the material that you have, where the class sizes will be more than 30 in physical education. And a lot of this stems around the learning experiences that we can provide for students in physical education, in band and in orchestra in particular. Now, the weight room, for example, is a physical education station and also impacts, impacts that program. We're going to be looking at class sizes larger than that, and with the significant leaps in enrollment, if this bears out to be true, which we have no reason, you know, not to believe that it wouldn't, we would have to double the sections, you know, that we offer in some instances. The problem is, we still have no place to put those sections. If we increase the sections, we could get the class sizes down into the desired, you know, range, but we're going to put two sections into one space in order to do that. So in effect, it really is nothing. I mean, it doesn't really achieve much. The physical education curriculum, just based on the space that we currently have, is, will be limited. That, you know, team, the team activities, team sport type activities, you know, net sports that they teach, rollerblading currently teach as well, these are activities that simply due to large numbers are very, very difficult to facilitate, and the curriculum would end up being altered. And these are things that our students both enjoy and learn a great deal from in the physical education program. We won't have enough locker, locker room space for our female students. We'll end up having two or three sections moving into the same, the current locker room space that we have. Numerically, that's in the ballpark of 75-plus students trying to change and get ready for their physical education class. Not only is that simply crowded, but it's a supervision nightmare for, or any staff members. So that, that's what we're going to be looking at here as well. Exploratory courses that we have, and here again is where we're starting to lean into the concept, lean into the philosophy a little bit. And it's important that decisions that you're going to make are going to tell us which direction, you know, we're ultimately going to go here. A year or so ago, we, in order to accommodate a space issue, we added a course to our exploratory, which diluted the numbers. I think if you recall, we talked about that. It diluted the numbers, went to six weeks, and allowed us to spread our kids out over the space that we had available. If we had to do that again, we're now talking about reducing these exploratory experiences to somewhere in the neighborhood of five weeks or a little bit less, which in effect is really not much of an experience to begin with. We think we were pushing it a little with the six weeks. We've made the adjustments and certainly don't want to see us have to alter the exploratory program or in effect possibly cut some of it out entirely in order to accommodate the numbers in other areas. There won't be enough space in the cafeteria for all of our students. I don't know if you've been in our cafeteria at noon time. It is full. It is absolutely full. And I can tell you, if we do nothing right now, next year you will see tables going down the hallway next to the pool. That's a given. That's going to happen anyway, no matter what happens here. We just have simply run out of room. Can we seat kids? Yes, but if they have, when they get up to, or you know, to put their trays back, we have problems with them moving around in the cafeteria. When they're coming from the server, servery to find a seat, we have problems with them moving about. So not only is it full with the tables, but the movement of those students is very definitely a problem, and we will have tables in, in that hallway next year. The band and the orchestra class sizes will again just begin to increase, limited by the number of sections. We, you know, the orchestra now, two of the grades practice in the cafeteria that we currently have. And as a result, I mean, they can't get into the band room because we have band, alternate day bands in the band room. The eighth grade has to have a singular band, and they'll be approaching 80 to 90, possibly 100 students here in the near future. And if you've seen that facility, you know how small that is. And if, if the eighth grade is unable in the near future to split those bands like we do in sixth and seventh grade, that's going to be oversized and be very difficult for our, you know, the band instructors to facilitate. The orchestra as it is now, as I said, is in the cafeteria for sixth and seventh grade, and we manage to squeeze them into the band room when, when we can. We also are currently sending orchestra students over to Prairie for some of their, some of their lessons. The last bullet is, you know, more of the middle school program may be reduced to accommodate, you know, the higher numbers of students. And I just, you know, I'm almost feeling as though I want to sit here and plead with you, you know, don't let that happen. You know, don't let, don't let this program continue, continue to erode. I've told you before, and I will stand by this, whatever the situation is, whatever we ultimately determine it to be, our staff will adopt that, that same philosophy I've told you before. Tell us where we are, we'll, we'll do our best to get it done. And we will, no matter what, we'll do our best to get it done. But that horse is beginning to slow down. All right? And, and we want to make sure that, that isn't, that really isn't the case. It seems somewhat ironic, in the same year when we've been recognized as a middle school of excellence, one of only six schools in the state of Wisconsin, that we're now confronted with this particular issue, but this isn't really, oh, surprise, we've seen this coming. We've known this has been coming. And I think to receive that recognition, even in spite of the conditions that we're experiencing, and I don't want you to think we've been terribly, terribly depressed. I mean, we've got a wonderful facility. We need more of it is the issue here. And we'll, you know, we'll keep doing what it is that, that we need to do to provide our kids to the middle level with a positive, you know, positive experience. So those, that's just a quick, well, not so quick, I guess, but that's a summary of those bullet points. And I hope it illustrates for you a little bit of the dilemma that, that we're currently in. And, and you know, we're really asking for, you know, some, some genuine consideration that hopefully will result in some relief, short-term, though it may be, it will result in some relief for us in terms of pursuing our mission, you know, as, as a quality middle school.
Great, thanks, Dan. Before we move on, do we have any questions at this point of Dan and the middle school? Tom?
Dan, the options A and B that you, you see before us tonight, I mean, can you give me a feeling of, of what the implications are of, of just going with B, not, not doing the expansion from, from your perspective?
Well, I guess the first thing I would say is, you know, every little bit helps. And basically everything that I've been going through here on the, with the bullet points would, would be a result of not being able to go with, with the expansion. These are the things that, that would happen. Without the additional learning stations for FIED, we would be doing these things. You know, the cafeteria, the expansion of the cafeteria enables us to increase just the square footage, the space in which we can implement the, the physical education program. So the things that I've been talking about, these things will happen, and I could, you know, I've been doing this for a while, and I kind of see down the road here what, you know, what's going to happen. You know, the, the four-year short-term plan is as it looks in the projection, but the ultimate damage is done earlier than that. It's going to happen earlier than that.
Dan, let me ask the question differently. A, in your opinion, is, is A better than B?
A with the construction?
Yeah.
And the use of Prairie, yeah, that's, that is the route that we would like to go. And you know, I should, I see you leaning toward your mic there, Mary. I recognize, and you know, we've talked, Suzie and I have talked, and we recognize the, the, you know, there are many issues that sort of surround this, and it's not a comfortable feeling for, for any of us, having, you know, to take a look at Prairie. But you know, Prairie is our neighbor, and it's, is a, it's a viable option for us. We don't, we don't want to intrude anymore, you know, into Prairie than, than is absolutely necessary. But we've been good neighbors for a very long time. You know, we have a lot of students who go over there for a variety of activities, and we would like to keep it basically at this level. Okay?
Can I? Just a clarification, we have more information to present that would clarify maybe some of the questions.
Okay.
So maybe we should continue on. I don't know how you want to address it.
Let's go forward if board members are okay with that. Okay.
Suzie's going to talk about Hudson Prairie and how we would meet the needs of three classrooms there.
Exactly. I took some time to analyze our school and the space that we have at our school at Hudson Prairie currently. And what we do have is we do have space to accommodate these three classrooms with minimal disruptions in our school. And the map that you have kind of shows where we're kind of placing the middle schools. Three classrooms down kind of by our gym and lunchroom in a central area, taking the place and moving one of our music classrooms to another space, and then moving two of our fifth grade classrooms to some other spaces. What the effect would have is one of our computer labs, we are asking for that to turn into a portable laptop lab to create some space for some of those classrooms. And then there are some special educators that will move back to spaces that they were in, in 2008, 2009. So it's just kind of the shuffling of places for that. Some of the things, as Dan spoke to before, you know, Hudson Prairie and the middle school, we do, you know, share some facilities. Currently, the middle school uses our, our FIED space before school for two sections. Some of the orchestra lessons are in our school, and of course, after-school sports are in our gym. We are in the process of thinking about accommodations as a staff, what we can do to make this happen, and I'm confident we can. One of the rationale for having the middle school all placed so that they're on that main corridor so that they're not, you know, causing a lot of disruptions throughout our school. Some of the other things is, and Dan and I and his team have talked a lot about our behavior expectations. The staff and the students at Hudson Prairie have really worked hard on having the above-the-line, below-the-line, and bottom-line behavior expectations, and those expectations would be the same for those middle school students as they come to Prairie, to maintain that culture of respect and caring attitudes that we have. Another accommodations that we're looking at too is just making sure that the transitions, that there's supervision out at all times. That's another thing that our behavior committee at Hudson Prairie really has worked hard on, is having adults present, and really the adults present, the high expectations for behavior has really helped our kids to really rise to those expectations and have really respectful behavior. And those are just some of the accommodations that we're thinking as a staff, and we're still working on that too, to figure out how we can make this work. But I do believe the placement is, is keeping it with the least disruption for our students at Prairie.
You know, if you think about Prairie this year, and my comments before about not running a building at capacity, Hudson Prairie since Rivercrest opened and we changed elementary boundaries, has had flexibility for enrollment fluctuations. With this plan, we have protected Prairie so that those fluctuations won't cause a problem, just because we're going to cap the classes and keep it at a four-section building, using the space that we have at other elementary schools. It's limited space, and Nancy's going to talk about that in just a minute, but what we're doing is using the space we have in the district because this is a short-term plan. And we, we think that's good and reasonable use of space, but certainly there is an impact on Hudson Prairie, and I appreciate Suzie's work to try to reduce any impact as much as possible on Hudson Prairie. So Nancy, will you talk about space for, at Hudson Prairie and at the other elementary schools?
Okay. As Mary said earlier, my office is responsible for monitoring enrollment at all of our schools, at all of our levels, the current enrollment and also projected enrollment. So at this point in time, Hudson Prairie has seats remaining at all grade levels for new student growth under the maximum enrollment guidelines. The closest grade levels to those maximum guidelines are kindergarten and first grade, where we have single-digit seats remaining. Other Hudson Prairie grade levels have double-digit numbers of seats remaining for new students. We're looking at Willa River, North Hudson, Holton as receiving schools and looking at their enrollments at this point in time. Kindergarten presents the greatest concern across the district. The numbers are kind of evening out across the district, and we would, we're, that's a grade level we're going to be monitoring in several of our schools, but we, we do have space for an additional kindergarten classroom at Willa River and also space at North Hudson if we need to provide an additional kindergarten classroom. There are sufficient first-grade classrooms at North Hudson and Holton if we were to cap that particular grade level. Second-grade seats exist at Holton, third-grade seats at Holton, fourth-grade seats available at North Hudson and Holton, and in fifth grade, we have classroom seats at all three, Willa River, North Hudson, and Holton. And we will be monitoring those grade levels at all of our elementary schools biweekly and reporting to the respective committees and of course, working with the principals on that. Just to clarify too, that what we're talking about, if, if there were maximum guidelines met at Hudson Prairie, it would only, it would be those new students who have yet to enroll. Currently registered students, current students moving forward to another grade level, including Hudson students who are there under a boundary exception, are already counted in these numbers and would remain at Hudson, Hudson Prairie. Okay?
Tim is going to move on, talk about the conceptual plan, design of the addition in option A.
On the conceptual drawing, and again, this is, I want to emphasize it's conceptual, just to help you get acclimated, north is at the top of the drawing. On the north side, we, we have the existing Hudson Prairie gym, and then on the south end of that, there's the existing middle school pool wall. And to the west or on your left is the existing cafeteria. So we have an open space in between the two buildings, and we're proposing to build out to the east. And the, the design requires that we have three firewalls on each side. Any of the new construction that touches the old construction must have a firewall of three hours in duration. So three of those sides have firewall that would be required. The total square footage of this is about 7,220 square feet. When we look, when we look at the first section there on your left, it's expanded cafeteria and physical education space. So it's a large space, it's about 3,300 square feet. And then moving over to the right, we have orchestra, band- And then moving over to the right, we have orchestra band, orchestra band, classroom space, and that's about 900 square feet. And then directly below that is weight room and FIAD classroom space, again, of about 1,300 square feet. And then on either side of that, required egress passageways, exit ways out of the So with that, I don't know if anybody has any questions on the drawing?
And then you want to move into the financing options?
You bet. Okay. The, when we look at the, again, conceptually speaking, conceptual drawing, conceptual budget, we're looking at a cost of about $2 million to add this space. We've got a couple of different options to finance this, and one option is, number one, looking at our fund balance. We do have some available dollars there within the fund balance policy set by the state, and that could be drawn down as a one-time drawdown on fund balance to help finance this expansion. There are other opportunities, and we've got some stimulus dollars via the federal government, and there's a couple of different bonding programs out there. One is called Build America Bonds, or BABS, and they provide for a tax credit back to the school district of about 35%. One of the better programs that's available is Qualified School Construction Bonds. Those bonds are, offer interest rates as low as 0%. And the, Wisconsin was just allocated about $100 million statewide for this program. There's a competitive application process. We're still waiting, we're waiting from the state to come out with some information on when the applications will be due. We do feel, however, that they will be coming due sometime in late April, early May, although we have not officially heard that yet. But again, a very good program if we're looking at financing. We've got, the two options are laid out. If you go to the next page, Diane. Scenario one is really straightforward. It's pay-as-you-go, so taking the dollars out of fund balance. And so, you know, one of, one of the advantages of this is we don't incur any interest cost, and we don't incur any issuance cost. But again, interest cost is relative, based on what type of interest rate we get with Qualified School Construction Bonds, most likely 0%. There are no investment earnings on unspent fund balance, however, so that's a little bit of a negative. We're giving up interest earnings on those dollars. And our flexibility is reduced with the reduction of fund balance. And so, you can see on scenario one, the summary down at the very bottom, potential borrowing interest cost, the investment earnings, and the estimate of cost of issuance, which runs about 2% on the cost of the bonds, is all, are all zero. And if we go to the next page, the next option is really a combination of financing $1,200,000 out of fund balance, and then issuing between, I would say between $800,000 and $1 million of Qualified School Construction Bonds. And the, in this particular case, we're assuming a fund, fund investment rate of 1%, which is, which is pretty conservative. But you can see, this is a 10-year life, it's a 10-year note, and if we're assuming that we spent $1,200,000, and that would be spent in 2011, and then we go on from there and issue the $800,000 in bonds in this example, down at the bottom, the potential borrowing interest cost is zero. And we've got investment interest earnings of 90, 90, almost 97,000 over the life of the issue. And then we've got an issuance cost of 2% of, on the $800,000, so 16,000. So, the net earnings in this example is $80,000. What's available to school districts is there's a $1 million exemption that doesn't require a referendum that school districts can issue, so this process would be available to our school district. So by board authorization, you could go through that process. One of the, one of the options, if you see the note down at the very bottom, when we're looking at, look at the annual debt payment, and looking at tax impact of doing a levy for the debt payment, we're looking at about $5 per year on a $200,000 home. Okay? Any questions?
Yes, Tim, I have one question. So, on the Qualified School Construction Bonds, which is what you're reflecting in scenario two, the state of Wisconsin has been allocated 100, roughly $100 million from the federal government to use that money to support this kind of bond structure. If there are applications from other school districts, and presumably there would be, could we expect to actually get $800,000 in Qualified School Construction Bonds as reflected in scenario two?
This is a, this, in this example, we're assuming that we would get 800,000, and it's, right now, it's based on a number of requests, a number of, you know, this would include school districts that have referendums, a number of referendums out there that have been passed, and the, based on a level of funding that we get. So this is really, it's really an estimate.
Tim, staying on that question, is there a timeframe that those, that we have to secure those bonds? Because if I'm not mistaken, this project would not start in until fall if we were to approve it, or it wouldn't be ready for use until
Right.
the 2011, '12 school year. Is that correct?
Right. Yeah, they, well, the timeline for the application process, again, we're expecting that the state's going to come out with the end of April, even though it's a very short timeline, we have been hearing that it could be as early as the end of April or sometime in the beginning of May. But what, what we have to, we don't have to have final plans in place. It's essentially a resolution, an authorization by the board to issue the funding, and then the application, as long as we have that, the application goes into the state, and then they start to review based on certain criteria, and one, one of which is making sure that there's board authorization to move forward.
Okay. Is there any more on your side, or can we open up your questions?
Certainly, and just want to let the board kind of get the big picture about decisions and what we need from you this evening. We're really presenting this report, and then we're looking for guidance from you about what additional information you need to move forward with, to a decision. As Tim spoke about the timeline for the School Construction Bonds, that may require us to make a decision before the May meeting, which was our original plan. But we also told the board that because of that timeline, we might have to move that up. Right now, he's talking about the end of April or beginning of May. So as soon as we have a definitive date, we can start talking to you about when that would occur. So that's the one thing that's hanging out there that we have not resolved as of yet. So, the middle school certainly has a pressing need for additional space. This short-term plan for up to four years is designed to address those needs as best we can with a short-term plan, knowing that the long-term plan needs to, we need to attend to that when we get done with the short-term plan. So, any questions that you have, we'd be very happy to answer.
Okay. Board members? Barb?
I have one more question on the, on the financial side for Tim, and then I have a couple of questions for Suzie and Dan. The Qualified School Construction Bonds, the advantage of that particular financing structure is because these bonds carry zero interest, correct?
That's a good question. They, and we did know, up, as low as 0%. There have, there was, there was another round of these bonds that were issued last year, and because of different variations in the market and investor interest, some of those were issued with low interest, I would say 1, 1 and 1 1/2%. Because they've made a few changes to this, they're trying to get that down so that investors would still be interested in the bonds at a 0%. So, we feel a little more confident that with the second round, we'd be looking at closer to 0%.
Thank you. So a couple more questions that I had about just the plan for using the space that I think Dan and Suzie can answer. One, or maybe Nancy, my first question was, Nancy, you talked about the fact that, and Suzie, I think you did, too, current students at Prairie would not be displaced if we were to move forward with the plan to use the three classrooms that you showed in the map. What about siblings?
Siblings that are not registered yet?
Yes.
The kindergarten registrations have already taken place. There's orientation this week. I don't know, Suzie, if you expect further sibling registrations of current students or not?
Maybe not this year, but it's a four-year, it's a four-year plan.
Not for this year, but I don't think we've projected out for the future four years to see that at this point.
Right.
You know, as we looked at the, the plan before Rivercrest was in place, once the family is in the school, they stayed in the school, they had priority to stay in the school.
Okay. Thank you. And one of the questions I had was, is the middle school currently using any Prairie space? And the answer is, that is a model that is already underway. So with both orchestra and with, for physical education, we are using some Prairie space to service the middle-high students. And my last question, I think, actually, maybe two more. Does, Dan, does this plan relieve any teachers from having to roam on carts?
Yes, three.
Three out of 13?
Yeah. The, we've slated health as the subject to be in there, and that would put three teachers in those, in those spaces.
Okay.
And that could, that spans sixth, seventh, and eighth grade.
Okay. And you answered my second question, which is, how do we imagine using those classrooms then? So, thank you.
Yeah, I, you know, I think the administration, as well as Dan and Suzie, have pointed out that, you know, this is far from a comprehensive solution. This is, you know, just to address some of the issues that we have on a short-term basis. And, you know, it's flexible space, and hopefully, it's going to, you know, get us there until we've figured out a longer-term solution. So, yes, it's less than ideal, but certainly something that's going to help. Mark?
And thank you, Dan. Well, you answered one of my questions that happened to be Barb's with regard to siblings, so I'm glad to hear that. I guess just, you know, some comments. I really appreciate Suzie and Dan, your positive attitude and the degree of cooperation in your schools. It's, it's great to see there's no turf battles, that you're working together, you're being good neighbors, and I just, I just want to commend you for that. I think it's terrific that you're able to coordinate for the, for the benefit of the district, so thank you. I think a very compelling argument has been made for more space. You know, it's a very interesting stat to learn, we have the largest middle school in the state. I was suspected we were up there, but that should be the number one, in this is, in which case, we're not, you know, necessarily proud to be number one in this category. So, it's amazing to know we are. And, and one thought I have is when we talk about, you know, this is, this is short-term, obviously, as Dan had mentioned, this isn't as comprehensive as we would like and doesn't address all our needs. But it certainly helps. And, you know, one thing that I have in mind is, when we talk about four years, that's short-term in the big picture, but it's a student's entire middle school career. And, and, you know, I think we owe it to make sure we can do whatever we can. It'd be nice, you know, down the line, we'll hopefully have, you know, the big picture taken care of. But in the meantime, we're going to have a significant set of students go through the middle school, and, and we have an inadequate facility. And so, I mean, I, I'm in favor of this plan.
Thanks, Mark. Tom?
I just would like to represent some of, some of the discussion with the Facilities and Grounds Committee last, and we had three agenda items in an hour and a half meeting, most of it was on this. So there's been a lot of discussion about it. Certainly understand the, understand the weight of this, the importance of this decision. And Lynn is not here tonight, Mark is also another member of the committee, and I think, you know, we as a, we as a committee, after a lot of discussion, a lot of bantering back and forth, believe that, that it's, we have to do something. To do nothing is not even, is not an option, and our committee would lean towards Option A. So, I just wanted to just represent the committee in that. And Mark, if you have any other comments about it?
No. Well said, Dan.
Thanks, Tom. Cindy, did you have any comments?
Just, I guess I would lean toward Option A as well.
Okay. Good. Mary?
I just want to make a comment to point out that in Option A, we've talked about this being a short-term plan. In fact, we've emphasized that a lot this evening, and the need for the long-term plan. But there is a part in Option A that is an investment and is part of a long-term plan, and that is that construction. So it is investing district dollars in the future of Hudson Middle School, which we know we will be using in the future. And this space, we are designing it very flexibly to fit in with whatever the long-term plan is. And that was one thing that was very pressing in our deliberation about how to design a short-term plan that could lead to a long-term plan. So, again, in Option A, there is a part of that long-term investment in the middle school that is very good flexible space that we will be able to use whatever the long-term plan is.
Okay. Thanks, Mary.
Mary, Dan, just if I could follow up with that, and I, that's a good clarification, Mary, I appreciate that. In addition to that as well, I think our committee felt like there's a real window of opportunity right now financially with that kind of package, and I'm not sure that that's going to be available, we don't know, down the road. So that was another really compelling reason for, for us in terms of Option A, so.
Thanks, Tom. Okay. I think you're, you can step down. Appreciate your
Thank you.
your comments.
Dan, do they, do, does the board have to take an action to approve the use of those three classrooms, or is it something that can be a consensus approval, or does it have to have another, vote at another time? What's the deal on that?
Mary?
Well, we, as we spoke in the past, we're looking for action on the whole plan at the next meeting, whether that be before the next regularly scheduled meeting in May or, but we would look at the board taking action on the entire plan, which would include the three classrooms.
Okay. Thank you. Nancy, did you want to speak before we get into the consent items? Did you have a?
Yes. As you move into the consent item, we do have the retirement of a, an employee, a 16-year employee, Carol Schomer, has submitted her intention to retire. And Carol has been serving the district for over 15 years. Actually, this'll finish her 16th year, and all of that time at the high school level, although prior to that, did significant volunteer work at our elementary schools. She presently, since 2001, has been the athletic director's secretary, and prior to that, secretarial assistant throughout the high school. So wanted to mention and appreciate her work.
Thanks, Nancy, and certainly, I want to extend that appreciation to Carol, her many years of service to the district. We'll move on to topics for action, then, consent items, the approval of the regular enclosed session, and special board meeting minutes, personnel, and expenditures. If someone could recite the expenditures as part of the motion, would appreciate it.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the items in the consent agenda, including a motion that the Director of Financial Services be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $1,854,472.30.
We have a motion by Barb. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed, motions approved. We'll move on to YMCA expenditures, and Tom Holland will step out of the room. As Tom's doing that, I'll just note that Tom is leaving the Y, so for another position. So I think this might be the last month we need to have him step out for, for that vote. I'll entertain a motion for approval of those expenditures.
Mr. President, I move the Director of Financial Services be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $300,000.
in the amount of $307.50 to YMCA in Camp St. Croix.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. Do we have a second?
Second.
Cindy? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions approved. Tom's making his way back in. We'll go to the committee reports. Learning and program development. Barb?
Our committee met on March 25th. We had four items on the agenda. The first one was Cory McIntyre, along with Pam Morrison, talked about changes in the early childhood curriculum and program, some additional program changes. This is an area that's been under evaluation. And some of the teachers have spent some time recently visiting other school districts who they believe deliver those services very well. The team is working on a new curriculum selection and expects to roll out that curriculum along with their new assessments this fall. One of their key goals is to align their work with the kindergarten programs to ensure a smooth transition for those students coming out of the early childhood programs. The second topic on the agenda was Cory, again, talking about the new model for our speech and language staff. Currently, they're piloting what he referred to as a three and one model that provides for more time in classroom observation on the part of the speech and language instructors, more time with parents and other specialists in consultation and collaboration with the general education staff and other speech and language staff. So another best practice, I think, being implemented in the Hudson School District. The next item, Cory, along with Sharon Kaltenberg and Peg, I can't remember Peg's last name?
Eller.
Eller, from Nutrition Services, talked about the district student wellness program. And they talked about some of the work that they're doing to improve the, the overall wellness, including the nutrition and some of the health areas for the students in the Hudson School District. And last, the committee spent some time discussing the eighth grade courses that are eligible for high school credit.
Do you want to keep going with the finance in Brian's absence?
I, I can
Don't look so surprised.
I can make an attempt.
I can help you out.
All right. Very good.
You take
Hold on one moment while I, oh, Diane, can you pull up that? There it is. Okay. So the finance committee met, and we actually spent quite a bit of time talking about what we just did here as a board on the middle, the short-term space solution for the middle school, particularly focused on the, the funding aspects of that. And then we spent a little bit of time talking about the use of the stimulus funds in this past year associated with the special, special education and the reporting requirements that the federal government has around maintenance of effort.
Good job. Thank, thanks, Barb. Okay. We'll move on to facilities and grounds. Tom?
Barb, would you take facilities and grounds? Just kidding. Facilities and grounds met, we had three agenda items, all the, all the committee members were present. The one that, as I'd mentioned before, spent the most time on was the middle school short-term for learning, which we've heard about now to a great extent, so I won't go over that. We tabled the preliminary capital project budget review, just for more preparation, getting closer to understanding what the budget is going to look like, or 10, 11. And then finally, we reviewed numbers regarding realignment, when we did a realignment between Hudson Prairie and the EP Rock School about a year ago. Wanted to understand the impact that had to classroom ratios and to, we're very pleased that it hasn't, had no impact, it really has maintained, it's been able to maintain its ratios, and we'll continue, continue to monitor that, so.
Tom, you said Hudson Prairie and EP Rock.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Rivercrest and EP Rock.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Tom. And any questions for Tom or Barb? I forgot to, okay. If not, we'll move on to Mark. And before you start, Mark, I know you came late and wanted to congratulate you on your reelection, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Thank you. Personnel committee met 31st of March, just a two-item agenda. We discussed the process for our annual superintendent evaluation and followed that up with the closed session where we discussed preparations for mediation with the teachers' union.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mark? I don't know if we have any citizens request to speak?
I would actually
No? Oh, we do?
I just did one.
Okay. If you want to just come to the mic and you could state your name and address, please?
My name is Shannon Conan. I am a parent of two children at Hudson Prairie. I live at 2329 Emerald Bend. And my question is, I didn't hear anybody speak about possibly getting the portable classrooms to come into play. I guess I am concerned with the debt that we just keep accruing. And if, can we use the money to do something else besides moving kids into Prairie? Putting up these portable classrooms would be a great idea. I graduated from Stillwater Senior High, so I can appreciate what large class sizes are. And I had to go to class on split campuses and also to portable classrooms. And I know that the Stillwater School District did that for many reasons, but one was to not accrue debt over debt. And especially since we've had to build a new Rivercrest Elementary School, we're still probably paying this one. And then they're looking at a new high school. And this just seems like, I understand the middle school needs this space, but right now for just cost-wise, would it be a good option to go that way? And I'm just very disappointed that you didn't even address that when it was brought up as an option. And number two, just as a parent, I would just like to say how disappointed I am that I did not find out about this meeting, or this being a topic being discussed, until about 5:30, and then I didn't even get a chance to look at my students folder being sent home. And I do know for a fact that this was brought up to the teachers yesterday, and it would have been nice to have had that email that was sent today, sent home last night, so parents would have had an opportunity to look at it and maybe get a chance to get here. So, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Shannon, for your input. We'll move on to board administrator response to public comments. Mary?
Tim, would you talk about portables? And certainly, we had extensive conversation about using portables. And talk about the cost and, and what our concerns were.
We did, and like we said, we did consider the use of portables. One of the, one of the things with portables is that when we look at a cost-benefit, portables, as we've looked at them previous to this as well, do not hold value. And so, and also do get fairly expensive when we look at utilities, getting the portable set in place, there's footings, there's all sorts of ancillary things besides just the cost of the portable that come into play. We're looking at a price tag of approximately, I want to say about 1.2 to 1.3 million on the portables versus the solution, if we're, if it's building of $2 million. And again, when you look at resale, you can look at leasing portables, but if you, in either way, if you look at leasing or purchasing a portable, they just don't hold value. You know, there's a, I guess we, we really felt that when we look at that cost-benefit, to have a building in place, we've got flexible space, the portables provide, will provide only classroom space. They can't, they can't provide FIAD space, they can't provide cafeteria space and some of these other things that we need.
There's a real significant investment in portables. And essentially, there isn't any money at the end of that. There isn't any structure at the end of that, there's just the investment. And, you know, that's hard for us to recommend in any way when we have existing space that's accessible to the middle school that we can use, and that we have the flexibility at the present time in our other elementary schools and have used a plan that worked when we built this building to kind of bridge the gap between a short-term solution and a long-term solution. We know that Hudson Prairie has run with these classrooms used, certainly for Hudson Prairie students, but all of the classrooms used in a very similar manner. We have Hudson Prairie and the middle school cooperating already and using cooperatively the space at Hudson Prairie to help out. And again, I think Mark Kaiserschad said it, you know, that collaboration and cooperation of neighbors, we really appreciate. But when we looked at portables, the cost-benefit just really wasn't there. And the space itself is not the same level of space that we can have in any other way. I know Nancy's reminded us that we have had portables at the high school and, and eventually those, there was a fire and they burned down. Portables have been improved since that time, but again, the investment of those dollars, there isn't anything in return at the end. So that, that's why we went on to other solutions.
Okay. Thanks, Mary. Oh, I'm sorry, Cindy?
And what the parent said about the timing of information coming to instructors and parents regarding this solution and the thinking about this, I think the parent's right. We have not done a good job in this district, not just this time, but other times in the past, in getting that information out. It's like we're always working on the edge. You know, where we, we get the package together where it's ready to be talked about, so close to the time that we're giving it in this meeting, that people who really want to be informed a little in advance, don't, don't get that. And we started talking about communications plans here six years ago. We had a full and comprehensive communications plan. We've got a website up now that is fabulous and giving people information. We have a communications director, we have all kinds of things, and we still have these critical things that don't get out to people who need to know so they can show up here to have an opinion, until it's so late in the game that they don't have time to get here. So I just want to say that I think that regardless of whether I get to keep working on it or somebody else is sitting in this chair, I just really think that I want to encourage this board to, to take this as, really to heart and, and work, I mean, I, I understand, there's just so much work to do. And we, you know, we know that we work hard to get the package together, and it, it really is on the edge, but we got to be better about that. And so please be better about that.
Okay. Thanks, Cindy, for your comments. Any other board administrator comments, reports? If not, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, parent one, parent C, parent E, for the purpose of deliberating to prepare for negotiations with a union group representing educational assistance, media assistance, health assistance, and nutritional service employees, considering a tentative contract agreement with teachers, and considering 2010-11 administrative compensation.
So move.
A motion by Tom.
Second.
Second by Barb. Any discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Van Loon, aye.
Kaiserschad, aye.
Holland, aye.
Trenohai, aye.
Crimmins, aye.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out tonight.